Call the meeting order for January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. We'll start with the church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, warrant bills are all signed up?
Yes.
Through the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda for January twenty fifth.
Second in.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion we approve January tenth.
Second.
All in favor? And I'll make a motion we approve the January seventeenth minutes.
Second in.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update.
All right, just a few things for you this week. Um, we have spent some time this week figuring out who's going to be reelected to the different committees that we do on the town meeting, which is coming up in April. Um, I did email the board committee and Warren and Finance. Thank you for those of you that replied. Um, the forest conservation, um, it still has some openings. So I just wanted to go over it with you and see if we can figure out which direction the board is going in. So according to my records, at this point, we have two vacant seats that are going to come due, that were elected in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. One of them was Brazier's seat that, um, he was elected in twenty-two. It's now du- open due to resignation. And then we had one that wasn't filled at all. So we have two until two thousand twenty-five that are open. And because those were originally elected seats, they have to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So we're still looking for two people to be appointed for those two seats. And then, um, Kelly Collins was elected in twenty-one. She's serving a three-year term, so it'll come due in June, um, of twenty-four. Uh, Sherri Van Ness, it took the seat of, of, uh, Mr. Ham that was elected in twenty-one. He declined it. You appointed Valencourt, who, who resigned, and then Van Ness got that spot. And then, uh, Mr. Rumah, uh, filled an appointed, uh, vacancy that we had actually back from twenty-one. So we've taken time to track everything back. But really what it comes down to is that we have two seats that we need to appoint for you guys through two thousand twenty-five, and we'll have three seats that, um, need to be elected. And then Mr. Benjamin is on his original term. He's good through two thousand twenty-five. So if you know anybody interested in the forest conservation, uh, and then, of course, the seventh member is the forester. So we've got to try to find a few more seats for that, but. Um, and next is, um, we, I think we have officially in it, I mean, we haven't taken an official vote on it, but the school committee is, is working on it, working on this April sixth day, date, which is that Saturday that we've all talked about. Um, we need to make a determination if we're starting at eight thirty or nine, uh, so we can start working on things on our end. I think it's the instruction of the board that you want to do some advertising. So I need to know what time you want to start it, how much money you want to put into it. Um, we've got our town meeting signs that we can repost, but are you looking to do a mailing? Because we moved from June to April, um, and we are closing the transfer station, as I understand it, and not.
Close all town activities.
Okay, and the rec, so we'll take care of that.
We make it so that if you work for a town, if you don't show up town meeting, you don't get paid for that day.
Sure.
Seems family. I don't know, anyways.
Play hooky, yo.
Um, so eight thirty or nine?
Do we think there's going to be a difference between a half hour if we start it?
I think nine o'clock's fine. I think it's normal when we start.
Nine is usually where you start.
Yeah, nine.
I was gonna say unless we really think that a half hour is gonna make that.
Well, they, you know, the registrar has to be there for an hour prior. So we're already, you know, the polls are, you know, we have to be available for registrations at eight. So what about the mailing?
I, I think a mailing sounds like a good idea because we're coming back the first time having the, the school and the town, especially after COVID. I, I think it would warrant just a reminder, and then the times, the shift of, on the calendar.
We, what, what did we do when we, during the, uh, I think it was COVID?
We did a townwide mailing.
Did a townwide mailing. What did we, what did we send out?
We sent out an actual letter along.
We didn't send out an actual copy of the one.
No, 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 no. It was a, it was a letter that I wrote.
Yeah.
Explaining everything and what we were doing with COVID and.
Usually have the warrant posted on the website, right?
Yeah, and it'll be, I mean, as soon as, yeah, it'll be posted in plenty of time.
In the letter you send out.
That it's posted there and that they can get hard copies. It's more, I think, like you said, the date, the fact that it's being combined, it's all on at the open.
I think we, I honestly, I think we should be doing it every year.
Some sort of mailing?
Yeah. I mean, you know, we keep saying we want more people to show up.
Yeah, and we agreed that we were gonna, um, have a babysitter. I'm still working with her. We'll announce the name. I think that we agree that would make a difference this year. Did, uh, Daniel, I'll put you on the spot. Did we talk about Mary Grant doing some light-o gerbs at a town meeting?
Uh, we mentioned it, my committee met, and yes, we're gonna hit it.
Excellent.
Awesome. Worked up pretty good last time.
Yeah, okay, good. So, all right, I'll, um, so if it's April sixth, we'll want to get the mailing out the second, second week of February, third of the week. I don't want it to go stale, but I mean, of March.
You should do it a month before, wouldn't you think?
And then with the newsletter.
Yeah, okay. So I'll start working on a draft and we'll bring you something to read. Um, I forwarded you an email, I think, from the school committee. They've asked to be on your agenda next week, uh, the thirty-first. Um, for the purpose of requesting a special town meeting, we'd like to have a special town meeting as soon as possible to request permission from the town to transfer our surplus funds from the past year to be used for much-needed projects. So they're coming, uh, to your meeting next week to talk to you about that possible special town meeting. Next is just, um, information that the, uh, code enforcement office has, uh, posted his official public hearing. This is for the two zoning articles that are going to be voted on in April. Um, he's got, he's required to do postings per his ordinance that it's on Thursday, the fifteenth. Copies are available online and also, um, the town's website or clerk's office and the town's website. Next, did anybody proof my town report?
Sorry.
Proofed it. I haven't gone through it, but I can, if you'd like, I can have it done for next week.
Yeah, that would be great. So we don't generally, unless we, you know, a there is the wrong form of there, there. We generally won't make a lot of changes to department heads' reports, but more, it's a table of contents. It's your report. It's, you know, tax numbers. We just try to get a second set of eyes, so.
I will do that.
Thank you, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Okay. I thought I was getting lower.
You got the chair?
I got the chair. Ed got me finally.
I didn't touch him tonight. I thought I had it.
Okay, uh, department head committee chair update. I know, I was joking with you. Nope, okay. Liaison updates, Tom's not with us tonight. Ed?
Sure. All I really have is just a quick update on the five department. And that, that'll follow through later on down in the agenda, but we did have two applicants for the job. And we interviewed two on Monday, so, but we'll need to be discussing that under.
Any luck with, um, the Lincoln School and her number?
Nope.
Uh, I wish that she was in too, to turn in the Acton Chaplain budget. So I wish I would have thought of it. So maybe I'll send an email, if that's okay?
She's waiting for someone else to get, I'll hold her with the numbers.
Oh, she is, yeah. I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to give them a deadline and just.
Yeah, well, we just stick a number in there.
Do you have any idea what that might be for?
I'm thinking five thousand. I mean, the outside needs painting. Now, you're not gonna get a company to paint it for five?
Mm-hmm.
If we can cover some materials and maybe some.
I, I myself would prefer having a company have priced out, having it all done.
It would be the best way, yeah.
I, I really think, you know, there's plenty of painting companies and stuff like that to do that.
Yeah. Oh, we, you can reach out, I'll reach out as well.
Okay. If we can get something in there.
Lead on getting a price on, on painting. I just didn't want to go above them if they were working on it, so.
And just maybe she doesn't realize that we're having the town meeting in April, so.
She does.
Oh, she does, okay, oops.
She's been reminded by several people.
Okay, well, I'm gonna stop on that one then.
Okay, uh, Dan?
Um, I attended the school committee budget meeting tonight at five. That's where I was earlier. And then this past Saturday, Mary Grant had a really great meeting. I got to meet a new member and a, hopefully, a potential new member, but they did, um, did a great job.
Yeah, so do you have, and I should have asked Dan this, I know he told me that a couple of them went, but, um, is the board, are we at a point where they're asking you to make an appointment to the committee with one of these people? Because we'll need to talk about that.
The individual was explaining the process at the meeting, and they were told to reach out.
Oh, they were gonna reach out if they were interested?
If they were interested, because they weren't sure.
We got two, yeah, we had two people that were interested.
We've already gone through with one of them. They were already, my understanding is they've already been sworn in with you.
Okay, we'll, um, off camera, we'll review the names.
Every person knows that if she decides she's interested, that she needs to reach out to you for next steps.
Okay, perfect. So one is already good?
Correct.
Yep. Is that the lady I met with?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all?
Um, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I have no updates. Uh, there's no old business this week. New businesses, floodplain management ordinance.
So the state has sent us emails and, or just sent an email and a certified letter to us this week, um, pretty much stating that, um, we have to adopt the new, uh, two thousand twenty-four floodplain management. Every municipality does, or, uh, we forfeit, pretty much, we forfeit, um, the floodplain insurance. Or people, people lose it. People will lose it if we don't, if the town doesn't adopt it. So it says, uh, pretty much, because the FIS, FIS report in your community has been completed, certain additional requirements must be met under section thirteen sixty-one of the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight as amended within six months from the date of this letter. So they have provided, which was very nice of them, uh, an actual ordinance that I have, I've scanned through, read pretty good, and made a few, uh, adjustments to it. Um, just striking a couple things out of it, just to make it more conforming to what we already do. So Acton already does deal with, we have a lot of, we actually have eight pages of properties within the floodplains. Uh, and, uh, so we, it is a necessary thing to do for Acton. Um, but we also, we do currently abide by the steps of, when somebody comes in for a permit, when they're in the floodplain. This ordinance spells it out. Um, I would have to either amend the zoning ord- article and state that we would have to reference this, or just go ahead and adopt what they have spelled out and, and created for us, which is pretty much a list of step by step. This is, this is how you get a permit. This is what happens if something's damaged. This is if your permit is denied. This is how you go about appealing it. It's, it spells it out really nice. Um, so I think it's just easiest for us to just adopt what they've written.
Didn't you say there might be a couple things you had to change in it with the?
I did. So, so some of the municipalities send their floodplain, um, permits in front of the planning board. Acton goes in front of the code enforcement office, but they still will go in front of the, uh, so when we do, greatest practical extent, conditional use and site plan review, we still review if it's in the floodplain. Um, and then if it is, then we, we require, um, certain, certain documentation, um, surveys or elevation certificates or things like that.
You won't make any, so you're not gonna make any amendments?
I'm not making any changes. I have to at least adopt this or say that I'm adopting it, changing in the zoning ordinance, or just go ahead and create its own ordinance and stick it right underneath the road ordinance.
Yeah, we, Jason and I met and went over it, and I think it's recommended based on the conversations we've had and, and talking to mouse, outside council, that just like the road committee ordinance, the Warren and Finance, it's really not part of the zoning ordinance. So we're stepping away from the planning board and more turning to the Board of Selectmen to make it just an ordinance, you know, like the sex offender ordinance. So really, um, we've given you a draft in there, and we've also emailed you one. So it's really just a first reading. We'll put it on the website, and then we'll bring it back next Wednesday. Um, it's not optional, so we're really just trying to put the timeline together.
It goes on to read, communities that fail to enact the necessary floodplain management regulations will be suspended from the participation of the NFIP, which is the floodplain insurance program.
Right.
Um, and subject to prohibitions contained in section, anyway, it just keeps on going on. But it says you have to do it, and if you don't, then anybody who is in the floodplain will lose their insurance because the town didn't adopt them, so.
Reading material, and we'll bring it back next Wednesday?
And the, the ordinance was drafted from the state. Um, it is in front of legal, but, uh, since it was in front of the state, I'm pretty sure that it went in front of there, someone that was qualified to review it. And my changes were just striking planning board and turning planning board into code enforcement office where it was necessary.
Yep, awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, budget presentations. Road committee.
Oh, I put road committee, I'm sorry. I supposed to say commissioner. Sorry, William.
That's okay.
Changing your title on you.
Uh, willingly, uh, here to present my budget for, uh, this coming year. As the rest of you don't know, I, um, ended up flatlining both District One and District Two summertime maintenance, and I also flatlined the, uh, the equipment rates that, uh, because the last few years, we've gone up quite a bit in our summertime. I think the last two years we have, and the equipment rates, we've gone up probably two or three times. So we're in a pretty good situation right now with those. So, um, I had met with Dave and Leslie, uh, back at the beginning of the month. Went over my special projects and, um, they asked, uh, Dave asked me to go back, and we all agreed to go back and, uh, kind of break up the project some more, um, and kind of break out what I'm looking to do. So that's what I did. You want me to just read down through them, or?
Sure.
All right, so, uh, the first ones on District One, it's the H Road. I'm gonna reclaim and pave a mile. Um, it's gonna start at twenty-nine seventy-eight, H Road. It's gonna go south, probably just about a hundred feet past Seth McCoy, uh, gravel pit entrance. That's where a mile puts me. The paving cost with the shoulders in the price is two sixty. I broke the labor out, twelve thousand machine time, uh, to prep the road. That's to have my tree guy go in there, uh, do the ditching, change the culverts we need to, uh, any work we need to do. Uh, then the materials in the culverts is, uh, I figured eighteen thousand. I gotta replace two culverts in there. Uh, there's one section of the road we're gonna fill a little bit. And then, you know, my riprap for my ditches and backfilling my culverts and everything. Um, so the total cost on that project's three hundred and forty thousand. And then.
So the tree cutting would be part of the machine time and prep?
Yeah, because that's normally what I've been doing is when I'm doing a section, I'll have him, I'll have them right there doing the work, because there's a, there's probably like a half dozen trees I'm gonna have cut down up there and everything. And then, uh, and I've been talking about Hawk Road for the last couple of years. I finally got the survey in pretty much done, so I'd like to be able to, to do that, because, uh, that road's really just not, it needs to be done. So, uh, the paving sixteen thousand, that's to go from one oh nine to three thirty-two Hawk Road. I get to, uh, change one covert out by, um, one oh nine, which I believe the state's giving me the covert, so. Uh, is what we talked about last year. Um, I thought about ripping the road up, but I might just go in there and like shim and overlay the road, honestly. Just it's, it's not really worth going in there and ripping the whole thing up. So I think I'm just gonna shim and overlay it. So the total cost on that project is, uh, thirty-six thousand. And then, uh, I'm gonna go to, uh.
That's District One.
That's District One, yep. And then District Two, um, is to finish County Road. Um, we're gonna go from, uh, two forty-six County Road. That's the closest house address to where they stopped, uh, last year, the year before. And we're gonna pave all the way to Fox's Ridge and the County Road intersection. That's right around sixty-one hundred feet, same thing. We're gonna continue on what Adam was doing. We're gonna grind it, uh, pave back with binder and surface, and the cost of paving that with the shoulders is two hundred ninety thousand. Uh, the labor, I figured sixteen thousand, and then all the last like three, four years, we've been having a wicked problem down in the swamp there with the road flooding. Um, there's a covert in there. Um, we keep it clean, but the problem we've been having is both swamps are full all the time right now. So the water's got nowhere to go, so it sits stagnant in the road.
Know why?
What's that?
You know why?
Yeah, it's probably something out in the woods down there.
Beaver downstream.
Right.
Damned it up, because usually it would only flood because a beaver would plug up the one, you know, higher, when you come down the bottom hill, and then the other one just couldn't take it all because, but there's a beaver downstream, because it never used to, used to fall pretty well.
Yeah, the big one, there was beavers in it. We trapped them out, and we've cleaned that one out. When I'm looking to raise the road, because it's been an issue, the last four or five times it's rained, I, we've had to hone the road off. There's two or three feet of water in the road all the time.
It's been an issue for years.
And, um, and whatnot. So I'd like to raise the road, uh, twelve hundred feet of the road, um, calls for right around a thousand yards of gravel. We'd haul in, uh, type D spec gravel, uh, three inch, we're gonna go a foot of three-inch gravel. Then, uh, then I got six hundred yards of inch and a half gravel to fine grade with, uh, to get ready for paving. Um, the machine time to prep the road, spread the gravel and haul it, I figured seventy-five thousand, and then the materials and culverts to, like I said, to do my culvert, backfill on my riprap and everything. So the total cost on that project's four hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Any questions? So I guess probably what we're gonna have to do here is to.
Ben?
I was gonna say, these, these are like the only projects, are the, are the most essential projects that you deem for, for this upcoming year that you could get done with on this?
Yeah, these ones are right now, um, like I said, to finish County Road, that'd put the, that'd put that to bed. If we could finish County Road, that'd be a good road to do. And then the piece on the H Road is, has been coming apart for a couple of years now. Um, it was paved, oh, man, I was, probably like eight years ago, and it was wicked cold the year they did it, so it's starting to come apart now.
So you're talking about by the S curve?
Uh, yeah, well, no, more like, uh, more up past, like Moose Paw and that section up.
He can's up through there.
Yeah, that section I paved.
Buzzies.
Yeah, I paved those couple of pieces in, because it's coming up when we're plowing. So I'd like to do that section, and then hopefully next year, we'll have the, the thing from the engineer, and then we can kind of go off of that, is what.
So look at the numbers here. You've got one total, because this is just District, we'll start with District One. We got one project with a total of three hundred forty thousand, and then we have another one of thirty-six thousand.
That's about four hundred thousand.
Yeah. So obviously, out of these two projects, the three hundred and forty thousand dollar project's probably the most important one.
Yeah, I'd say.
Because what we're looking at, typically, we budget two hundred fifty thousand for paving.
Right.
Okay, so you got costs here of two hundred sixty thousand for paving.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for that project, which we ten, ten thousand dollars more than we normally allot. So, um, what I'm getting to is this, we go back here, okay? And you've got, um, where is it?
Paving?
Four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, is that, is that the whole?
That's everything.
Just one project, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the paving was two ninety.
Okay, so, you know, obviously, that's the only, that's the only road that you have on District Two you think needs to be done?
Yeah, because the rest of them that were done last year are gonna be done in the springtime. And, uh, like I said, I'd like to just put that road to bed. That was, that was part of the, the.
Well, what we're trying to do is try to figure out if you have a four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar project, you know, for District Two, that's, um, oh.
Did you add them? Eight hundred and nine?
Two hundred and fifty thousand out of that.
From the four thirty-three?
Yeah.
A hundred and eighty-three thousand?
So it's a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars more than we normally spend a year. So even though it's a two-year project, we know that.
Right.
So we, we, we're just gonna make sure when we plug the numbers in, you know, if we take all these and throw them in together, that's a huge increase. So whether or not we should prioritize, obviously, this one here would be a priority for District Two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And your priority on, the other one would be, um, the, uh, mile of H Road?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Do that.
Okay.
Where did the other project, I'm just looking at the other Warren article. Do we get it clean, the one from last year, does that zeroed out, or we got rolled over?
What's that one, Peck Road?
You don't think you have enough money to finish that now, do you?
Which?
Only way, yeah, you did, you, we, we approved you to roll over money.
I think it was like twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Was that project a hundred percent done?
It will be in the springtime. That's Peck Road.
Yeah.
Because the articles were written to roll over once, or the money goes in the unassigned fund balance, right?
Yes, yes.
Want to make sure we don't have too many accounts open at once.
Exactly.
Track.
So, um.
So Warren and Finance is here, does anybody?
Is this the only, this, and this is the only paving you're asking for, correct?
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, I just, I, I'd like to, I mean, we, we talked a lot last year about the, the paving, and I kind of thought we'd have the stuff by the engineer. That's why I was a little hesitant this year that we were gonna do paving. I kind of thought we were gonna wait, just that's what we talked about, but I mean, that's.
No, no, I mean, this is, this is plenty, we, we gotta keep, we, we can't stall the process until.
Right, right.
We gotta continue moving on. I, I think this is a great idea, the way that we've got this set up here, that, I mean, it sounds like a big blow all at once, a four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar, you know, it, it's an increase, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar increase in one year, but it's not, it's over a two-year period. All depends on what happens next year, how much you ask for, because you're, they could, but, um, but at the same time, you know, the Hawk Road is pretty important, no?
Yeah, I mean, it's been a couple of years in the making, but the biggest thing was the.
Trying to, trying to make it so we can get these numbers to fit without having a humongous giant, um, uh.
Increase.
Increase. So, um, okay, uh, you got any questions?
I guess if, if, um, District Two, if that's gonna be a two-year project.
It's got two years to do it. It doesn't have to be a two-year project.
Okay.
It's just what it would, we've set it up so that instead of just rolling over money and rolling over money and this and that, this project has two years to get completed. If it doesn't get completed, you lose your money.
Okay, that makes sense.
We're essentially establishing a reserve account for that road.
And, and, where we're trying to make it so that we can actually keep track of what gets paved every year, what projects are getting done, and I think this is really the best way to do it.
And, yeah, I think it makes sense, especially, like you said, you started, it sounds like somebody's just trying to finish a project that you already started, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, Adam started the Peck Road, same idea, that was a two-year deal. That was the first one we've tried, and, um, um, but.
I think that makes sense, kind of.
You wanna talk about, uh, paving money in the regular budget?
Yeah, well, you're not asking for the two fifty for each time.
I kind of thought we were kind of getting awa- away from that.
We are.
We are, we are. We, 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 we want all the paving to be documented, each project, so everybody, when we go to town meeting, they know this part of H Road's getting paved, this is getting done. It's not one of these deals where it's, um, May twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Ju- July's coming, and we gotta get, we gotta get rid of some money.
Yeah.
Well, and for paper records too, it's great, because when we, when these articles pass, like Peck Road, we're copying the minutes, we're putting it in the Peck Road folder.
Yep.
You know what I mean?
Know exactly what's what.
So in five or ten years, they can find that, which reminds me real quick, that survey that you got on Hawk, was it Hawk Road?
Yeah.
That you, um, the town didn't get a copy of it. I'd love to put it, I'd love to put it in the file.
I'll call them.
We really gotta see that, because honestly, if you're gonna go in and build that road and spend money, we ought to make sure at least we build an adequate turnaround.
Yeah, they sent me the bill for it, like I said, I haven't.
Oh, they didn't send you the survey?
No, now that I think of it, I, I got the rough draft of it.
Oh, okay.
Unless I, I'll call Nick tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll.
We really ought to be looking at, yeah, I mean, I remember back in the day when the, the road committee was going, ooh, we're gonna get all these, all these turnarounds, thinking, oh, still haven't got one done. But, uh, we even passed the road there, um, for maintenance, it doesn't even have a turnaround on it, which is silly. But, um, we, if you're gonna be putting that kind of money, we really should look at making sure we have an adequate turnaround for you to get in there, because the turnaround's in, it's not really adequate.
No, we're the one, we've been back, well, we usually plow in, then we back into that little road right there. No, we're the one, we've been back, well, we usually plow in, then we back into that little road right there, I don't know the name of it.
Couple of Camaro's?
Yeah, the little road, we back in there.
Back in there with a big truck.
No, no, Robin plows it with his little truck.
Well, we used to plow with the big truck, we used to go.
I don't even dare go in there.
No, no, we used to get stuck in there all the time. So, um, you're, the finance committee, gonna, come on up, Joyce?
Um, I'm curious about a couple of things, one of them, um, with these projects, and definition of big, I don't know, but this parking lot has been a big project for a couple of years. Does that fit into all of this?
This is a whole completely different, this is, the parking lot's town hall only, you know?
So step one is getting the building down, which we're gonna talk about tonight. They're, they're continuing to move forward, I know where you're going with it, but they, the first step was getting the building down, and then they're gonna look at the parking lot. So you must make sure you're spending that.
I didn't know if you were trying to tie him with that.
Both, actually, and the other thing is, um, with Will as our, um, road director, what happens if we get, I assume, I shouldn't assume, I know that, but we have another, uh, road commissioner in, Will's done all this work.
It's all laid out for the new guy.
When, yeah, when the, when the nomination papers go out, whether Will will have his own decision to make, if someone else runs, you know, if someone else wins a position or he chooses not to run, they'll get whatever pa- project is passed by the town.
And, you know, hopefully whoever we, uh, you know, elect, if it's not Will, is qualified to do that.
Exactly.
The big question that when you go and vote, you, you want to make sure of.
Well, not just that, but I hate, like hell, to see him saying, you know, I busted my balls, sorry.
Brought me cookies tonight, but you can't talk like that.
They're dreaded cookies.
You know.
They're wonderful.
And now, um, you know, this is being thrown out the window because somebody thinks.
This is the way it doesn't get thrown out the window, because before, when you had the two fifty and the two fifty, okay, and you had a new road commissioner come in, well, he comes and says, well, I don't feel like doing those projects, he has to do these projects.
The town meeting's gonna happen in April, they can't spend their money until July, the election will be in June, so whoever runs will know what they're going into.
Honestly, when they run for it, they'll know.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Lopez.
Gentlemen, young lady.
Aw, thanks, Ray.
I'm just wondering about, uh, I, thank you very much for getting Buzzell Road done, and my question is, is it done? Is the final coat on there, is there anything else that was allocated under that budget, uh, yet to be completed, or what's, what's going on?
Can you answer that question, Will?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, they, they did all the, they grind it, they put the base on it last, last summer, and then the springtime, they're coming right in the springtime, and they're gonna surface it, and it's gonna be put to bed in the springtime, it'll be all done in the spring. Yeah, it'll be done in the springtime.
Hundred percent.
It'll be all, all set.
Obviously, there's conversations that go on outside of here, and that's fine.
Going outside?
Well, whatever, um, we have a large pool of money that's unassigned. And I know you've made some comments about, you know, two fifty, two fifty each year, trying to limit it, but that's, that's historical.
Well, no, no, we're not, we're not limited to anything, Charlie.
No, no, I'm just saying, that was the comment that was made, and I'm hoping that you're not gonna try to stick to anything even close to that, because we're in a whole different era now, where as far as cost of all materials and labors have gone up. And so I don't, I don't see anything really.
Charlie.
Excessive here.
Seven years ago, I was getting ninety-nine thousand dollars a year for my paving. If I wanted, we, we are progressive, believe me.
No, I, I know you've progressed, but I'm just saying it, I didn't find that very helpful to the dialogue, because. No, no, this is not an accusation, relax, 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 don't get defensive, don't get defensive. I'm just saying that there's really nothing here that I see that, that's usury, you know, that's excessive. The one thing that I would like to see, only because of, um, improving adhesion between layers, I'd like to see base and final coat all done in one year.
No, I don't know how much road construction you've done, but you never do that.
Plenty, and it's done a lot like that.
We typically, when you grind the road, you base it, and the next season, you, you, you'd, you'd like to do it in the same season, but not directly afterwards, you'd like to let it settle.
But in the same, same season, instead of waiting, because that next, next year, if you wait that long, you're not gonna have full adhesion. Because no one ever puts down good binder.
Plus, are you, are you guys tacking your road?
They put the surface on?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're tacking it.
They're tacking.
Because there's sections that I, when I drive around, I see sections where there's raveling, you know, where the, the top wear coat is coming off, the top coat.
That's, because exactly like that section he's talking about, the reason why that did that, is they didn't tack that road, and plus they did, it was freezing, they salted the road the night before, so you can't do stuff like that, that's, you know, that's, yeah.
And that's the reason why if you can do it all one season, it's, you'll have a much better road and it'll last longer, so you're not repaving the same road too frequently.
I think that's the, the intent is usually to do that, but problem is, is whether or not they come back to do it and do it, and that we're at the paving, paving guys, you know, discretion, I would say.
And Charlie, if I can add too, so last year, if you remember, they, they actually got the two hundred and fifty thousand in paving and in addition the, the Peck Road. So there wasn't, you know what I mean, so it was over that amount last year, they got the two fif- so, so I think he intends to.
My, my intention, my intention is to make sure these guys get ample amount of money to do their job, which I was never allotted.
I just said, I'm saying that, you know, we've got this extra cash that was accrued because it was supposedly needed by the town. You're losing money letting it sit in a, you know. Okay, well, when you go and you correct for rate of inflation over the last ten or twenty years, you've lost money.
Maybe over the period of time, but we have corrected that problem, we are making.
You're starting, you're starting in a hole and you're trying to dig out.
Yeah, but you're, okay, I guess you could say that, yeah.
Right, that's what you're doing, so why not go and take some of that money? And go and move it into this, because this is for the town and that's what that money was accrued for.
So Charlie, just your comment on the two fifty, I don't think it was anything to like reference that that's what we're limiting, I think. I'd like to finish my. David's reference to that, I think was, because voters are gonna say, why did we see this budget and now we're seeing these numbers? I think it was just to explain, so that we'll have a chance to say, this is the new process we're going through, we're focusing on project, I don't think it was, that we're adhering to, I think, I think it's just an opportunity for Will to explain why those numbers are gonna be different and more this year.
No, and I understood it as that.
And the other thing, I was, the other point I'm trying to make here is, we, we gotta look at every department, Charlie, right? So, I, I, I would love to give Will a million dollars a year for paving, love, okay? I'd love to get the fire department a brand new truck every other year, too. Transfer station, whatever, give everybody what they need, okay? But when you start looking at the end numbers, okay, and when you start, you start getting to say one million or one point two million, just hypothetical numbers, okay, that you're gonna have to raise in taxation, okay? So that's when you start thinking, okay, if he's asking for four hundred and, uh, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for that project, and this, you know, so you're a hundred and eighty thousand here, and then you go back here and you say another hundred thousand there, you know, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's just in one department, then if you add in two fifty in each side, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So now we have to account for three, eight hundred thousand extra in the tax base, that's why I was asking about the extra two fifty.
No, and that, then that's fine.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we're digging ourselves out of a hole, use that money wisely, for something that the town needs, instead of letting it sit in that hole.
I don't like the reference, digging ourselves out, we have millions of dollars in the bank, we're not in the hole, okay? We, now, you're right, Charlie, we, the, the previous, I, I'm not taking credit for this, because if I could, if I was able to, uh, incur three million dollars, okay? I'm no economic major here, for me to be able to figure out how to do that would be amazing, okay? I'm sure this has been an ongoing thing for many, many years, okay, now we are addressing it. Tom came up with a great idea, we're making three, four hundred thousand dollars a year on that money now. That money's just not sitting there, so throwing that out there, so we're not in a hole, we're way up here and we're making money, now we want to start splitting it up, but we can only raise the tax base so much each year.
Right, and that's why.
That's why I'm asking about the extra five hundred thousand dollars.
And that's why I would suggest that there be an article that you transfer some money from that unassigned.
Do that anyways.
And I'm just pointing it out publicly, that that's something that should be considered seriously, so that there is no increase in the mill rate.
No, and, and what I've been talking about right along was taking that three million dollars or whatever, I can't, I'd say, say three million, but it's, it's.
Whatever, doesn't matter.
Millions of dollars, okay, and setting up some sort of a, uh, um, a, um, timeline, okay, on estimated tax, okay, and how much we could pull out every year to keep that, you know, we, in theory, if you've got that much money and you, we usually put, say, four or five hundred thousand a year, usually about a half million dollars every year, we take out of the general surplus to put towards taxes, to do exactly what you're talking about, okay? We have all this extra money, we can do that, okay, but right now, from what looks at, we already have a surplus this year. So, we're, we're gonna, my, I'm hoping that between us and the school, I don't know how much they're gonna all, give back to us, that's, so we're just taking what we have, here's a half million, we're already gonna put back, in my eyes. Not the same, you know, these guys haven't said so yet, but that's my idea, okay? That's what we plan on doing, I don't know, I do not want to raise the mill rate at all.
And that's wonderful, and I don't, I wasn't even insinuating that you wanted to do that, I didn't think you did.
And we can, and we can offset and make this all work, it's just slow and steady, Charlie.
No, I'm just saying that, don't, I would, I would be against you impeding any of this, because of a dollar amount, even, even if you're gonna get four, five percent on what's invested, next year, because let's say you go and you cut back on something here, or even in the next year, you go and cut back, what will the cost be the following year to make up what you're gonna, you're losing money?
The only, the only, I asked them the amounts for a reason, because when it comes to you guys at the finance, you're on finance, right?
I think so.
Yeah, I don't know, guys are all a bunch of different committees, okay? There's always that question, well, one of these projects, which one, you know, we're gonna cut it over here, or even us. If we look at this number, we're, we're four hundred thousand dollars over last year's budget line, the increase is, I can't do the math that quick, but say thirty percent, we'll just throw a number out, okay, you're a thirty percent increase, well, people are gonna start asking questions, okay? Are we gonna have to cut a number? Well, you know, I just made a remark, I'll cut to thirty-six thousand instead of the three forty or the, the big one on the box side, yeah, you know? Just, you gotta give and take somewhere, you know, is that, does that need to be done? If it does, he tells us, we put it on anyways, a taxpayer.
But the, the bottom line question about whether or not it needs to be done, that should already be established, these roads need to be paved or they need to be raised or repaired. That's a known need. Now you have to decide, what is the cost balance between taking money out of unassigned, considering how much you're gonna make on that money in your investments, versus what will be the cost be if you defer that to a following year, which you know it's gonna be more than that five percent?
You look at it different than I look at it, I look at it like, you know, um, you got money in the bank, right? And, you know, it's like someone wins a Mega Box and they run out and buy a bunch of new cars and stuff just because they got it, okay? I, I like, I like being conservative, keep that money in the bank, not all of it, use what you need, so when that big thing does come up, okay? The roads are big, every year, that's an evolving thing, that we know, okay, so we're gonna, we're, we're gonna let him budget, budget, budget. But just to take money out of that undesigned, just to do it, uh, you know, I, I, there'll be a point we're gonna need that money, and we're gonna need it for offset taxes when we really need it.
And I think that's what he's saying, though, to, to think it, like, he's not saying just do it willingly, he's saying just make sure you, you think and compare, is it more beneficial to keep it there or to make sure that these essential projects get done, I think.
Because the need doesn't go away.
Oh, no, no.
Cost you more in following years. Will the cost, the increased cost is, if that's greater than what your return is on your investments, then it's time to pull the money out and do the project.
I, I think, I think we've all talked about that.
I think we're all on the same page here, just different.
Thank you.
Lee?
You wanna hear it from me?
I don't know.
Hello, uh, just a couple of things, uh, I was hearing that we were talking about this being a two-year project. Is, is the proposal to raise the money for a two-year project all in one year?
Yes, so what it is, is when that go, goes forward to the town, at town meeting, okay, these projects, the money will be allotted that year, and he'll have two years to spend that. Doesn't mean he can't do it all in one year, he can do it in one year, it's just giving him that second year, in case he can't get the pavers back, or there's issues or whatever, um, but it's like a reserve. Just for that project.
I, I, I'm all in favor of reserves and money allocated for specific projects and, and tracked for specific projects, so I'm fine with that, I think that's great. Not to confuse things, when you're talking about the two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, if you take that two hundred and fifty thousand that you were talking about as the general budget line for paving, is, are we making the assumption that the projects outlined here are the only ones that are going to be using those funds?
There's not gonna be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund.
Well, historically, that's what the.
Typically, you went two hundred and fifty thousand while it went from ninety-nine to one fifty to two fif- uh, two hundred to two fifty, evolved in the last few years, and so you take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you just go pay whatever the road felt like.
I, okay.
He's asking you if you're gonna zero out the paving and reconstruction to zero if you put these articles on as special reserves.
So there won't be any other paving going on? Okay, that's my point.
That money's already been allocated for these projects.
Into these, that's why, that's why Will's budget come in late, because what I did is I asked him, um, I don't, you probably don't have this, do you?
Yes, he does.
So, what I did is I had him, he had a paving, paving line, and then down below, okay? He had a, um, he was gonna take the machine time and the labor out of his summertime maintenance, okay? I said, no, 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 this project is gonna be all self-contained, we'll know exactly what it's gonna cost to do that mile of H road from Seth McCoy's pit to wherever, okay? And it's all gonna be out of here only. So, he's still gonna have his summertime maintenance, which we didn't cut that, correct? Did you not? Okay, you flatlined it, so he's still gonna have his summertime maintenance, this is added extra on top of it.
Which gives me my next question, is, are these projects going out to bid?
No, they don't have to go out to bid, because he's doing them by the hour through the town rates that we vote for.
The paving goes out to bid, though, the major, the major portion of that, that's paving, we go out to bid for that every year.
But all the reconstruction of the roads.
He's your elected road commissioner, he's doing the work.
Every year on our warrant, we'll have the articles for all the equipment rates, and we vote on how much we pay him.
Okay, and the, the, the next question is probably one that's easy to answer, is, is there any kind of state or federal money available to support infrastructure improvements?
Looked into that, yes, it's, we don't have grant writers and.
You get a little bit of L rap, but that's not it.
We get the L rap funds, the L rap funds are from the.
Lately, there's, you know, the last couple of years, since COVID, there's been a lot of money allocated towards.
Oh, yeah, we got money during COVID, but we.
But I don't, they talked a lot about infrastructure and rebuilding a lot of the infrastructure, and I don't know.
West Shore Drive, that's what we spent the ARPA mon- money on, the majority of that money went for the reconstruction of that.
Okay, so there's, there's no more money available for that?
Well, I mean, I'm not to say there's not grants out there if you find one.
Well, or the road committee could be, you know, looking for that stuff, uh, that's not our job, our job's oversee these guys doing their job.
Okay, so this will be incorporated into the general budget for the road?
Yes.
District one and district two, are we gonna see a revised budget that includes everything?
So you're gonna see, you're gonna see warrant articles, I just want to go back to the Peck Road one from last year, so, so it says to see if the town will vote to establish a reserve account, and this, and this one it might say H road, and it's gonna say, you know, to raise and appropriate X amount of money, any funds remaining in the account after the completion of the repair, no later than June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five shall be assigned, shall be returned to the unassigned fund balance, so, it, each one of these roads are gonna be their own article, so the voters can vote them up and down, and then his regular budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred thousand for district one, um, you know, maintenance and sand and salt, and all the other articles will look the same.
But no paving?
Well, so this is, this is a conversation, paving.
No paving in the.
Well, this is the conversation for the board, so last year they gave them each two hundred and fifty thousand and they put Peck Road forward, so that means that there was more than two hundred and fifty thousand spent, they haven't had full disclosure yet, but if they put those numbers fully in like that, they probably won't put two hundred and fifty, but they haven't had any budget discussions yet.
I have no intention to put two fifty, I think the whole idea was to do the paving this way, so we know exactly, every paving project, what it cost, where it was, and, uh, documents everything for us.
We did it last year because we only had one project, it was the first time we tried it, correct?
That's fine, I mean, I, 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 I'm fully supportive of reserves and specific project.
Gives them incentive to finish it, so.
But I'd like to see what the budget for the roads are going to be, all-inclusive at some point, yeah.
Yeah, so you wanna see the, the summertime, the wintertime and all that stuff too?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Leslie?
Good evening, um, I definitely am in favor of doing these special projects, I mean, I think it's, uh, it's a whole lot more transparent, um, so that the town does know what, what's being done. Are you anticipating that this will eliminate the excess funds that are, uh, that have been carried over? Um, I checked the audit, um, from last year, and there was a hundred, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the, uh, roads didn't spend. So do you think that, that going, moving forward, that that will be, uh, reduced?
Was that, was that paving or was it for the, was that sand?
It was just a total, it was a total, yeah.
Is that both, is that, does you want to two combine?
It was, yeah, it was a hundred and twenty-five for both, it.
So that, this is, this is exactly why we're doing this. Because we've gotten to the point where our budgeting is really not budgeting anymore, it's sticking numbers on a wall. You know, we want this much and we just kind of spend it as we go, um, this is budgeted. And, you know, the summertime numbers and stuff like that, it's to the road commissioner's benefit to use his general maintenance money up.
And we're not rolling them forward anymore, they were taken off the warrant last year, so.
We're not rolling them forward. We're not rolling them forward anymore, so-
They're not on the list of accounts.
We're gonna get to budgeting, spending your money correctly, which they do, but it's, but having all this rule of 100 and some thousand dollars a year, you know, you wonder why we have a million dollars of surplus, well, that's why.
Right, and I mean, and that's why I'm, I'm hoping that it will, um, eliminate a lot of the excess funds, you know, money that we're giving them, that, that's not being spent.
I think there's a lot of departments in the town of Acton, well, there was a, there's a couple of departments in the town of Acton that can look at their budget and go, well, I got 60,000 extra here, 180,000 here, maybe 600,000 here. You know, we get all this extra money, and then we look back, and we, oh, you guys overtaxing us. This is, this is gonna solve-
So, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a great idea. And moving away from the special projects, um, and going into summer maintenance, I was, I was wondering if Will could kind of like go over what he anticipates he's gonna be doing with, um, his summer maintenance, and if there's any-
Do you want that tonight, or during the meeting?
I'm sorry?
You want that tonight?
Uh, if, I mean, if he has an idea, or if he, um, you know, wants to send it, um, let us know at a, you know, later date when he's gonna-
Do you guys have a meeting you want me to go to? No, we're doing it kind of right now.
Yeah.
Well, I, I drafted a list before, I think somebody made the comment to me to bring this, so I-
Yeah, we didn't get a list.
Yeah, I mean-
No, no, I know, I didn't- But you can tell us all about it.
The question's probably gonna come up, so I'm-
Oh, okay, we'll go- We talked about it when, when the three of us had the meeting, I, you know, I was, I was wondering if you had an idea as to what projects you might be working on.
This is coming up, so, uh-
Okay, I think you.
So, um, so District one, from la, even last spring, we had all the rain this year, I got quite a bit of ditching to do on the H Road, um, from Romack Warters all the way down to Lakeside Drive, that whole ditch line's full of sediment now. Just a few weeks ago, the ditch line on San Page Road, I'm gonna have to address that down there this summer, um, that washed out two weeks ago.
Oh, down by, by Nathan Road?
Yeah, right there, yeah, we'll have to address that, um, I got a pile of tree work I gotta get done, um, I got, um, especially up on the H Road, that's starting to grow wind wicked bad, I've had a couple of calls from gravel pit owners, like, we're getting limbs now that, I've trimmed off, but they're starting to come down the road, they're hitting their mirrors and whatnot, so I get a, I'm gonna concentrate on that. Uh, even on District two, like Peck Road, uh, that, that needs to be cut back wicked, yeah, what's that?
Hopper Road's getting bad down the river.
Um, I'm gonna do the shoulders on Goose Pond Road, um, I, I wanted them last year, but I just didn't have time with all the rain we had, didn't have time to do that, and then I got two collapsed culverts on the Man Road I wanna get done, um, on District two. This is real quick, uh, the Hopper Road, that, right by the, the, the barn light place there, that ditch line going up on the right-hand side, that needs to be done again. County Road at the, at the beginning, we had to go down there and mess around with it a few weeks ago, but it usually, needs to be some touch-up work down there, that could be done in the springtime or this summer.
Is it washed out right by Mees?
Yeah, well, when they paved, when they paved, they come, they, they caught Bob's driveway when, when they came by with the paver, and they brought their wing right back in, so there's that, so the water gets going down the hot top, and they'll come around the stop sign and just keep going, so, I would've thought they were kinda, would've just kept paving right around that corner, and the water would've just went down the road, so-
Put like a curb there or something?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm probably gonna do in the springtime, I'll prep it out, and I'll just go off of the, the apron in Bob's driveway, and I'm gonna just pave right around that corner, and I'll solve that whole problem, that's, that's what happens, like, you have, because they put just one big apron in front of his wood yard, and I'll do this, so the water gets going on it, and then just hits that corner, washes it out, and goes right down the road, so that's what's been happening, um, gotta go to, whoever's gonna have to go down to Langley Shores and upsize those culverts down there, that's gonna have to be done this year. That's, that's gonna be a big one, uh, Lebanon Road, they did all that ditching down, I mean, all that tree work down the Lebanon Road, so where they clearcut it, like, there's like four or five, like, spots that everything's low, so the last time it rained, all the water's coming down, and when they cut the, when they cut it off, they must've, when they were cutting all the trees by the road, the, the whole ditch line's full of wood now, I went down there, last time it rained, it started throwing all the wood, when they cut it, it fell a bunch of, a bunch of small pieces. Seventh Street, um, if you go up in Seventh Street, somebody built a garage, and, um, all the water's going right down across the road now, so we're gonna have to like, maybe try to redirect it when it comes down the road and get to go into a ditch right there, um, it's kinda been a problem this-
That full side?
Yeah, if you go in Seventh Street, like halfway up, somebody just built a garage on the right-hand side. And then, uh, New Bridge Road, that, the, uh, by the, the Horn Pond there, there's some ditch lines that need to be cleaned up, and I know I'm forgetting some stuff, but that was just a couple of things I wrote down tonight.
Did he answer your question?
He did, yeah, he, yeah, he's covered a lot of territory.
Good, awesome. How's that? I, I, you guys all set with Will? Okay, thank you, Will.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I think the rec committee, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna put that off till next week, because, uh-
Yeah, she's been, she's been emailing me, she just, just answered some of the questions, and she did take the 60,000 out, like, it was just between the conversation you and I had, but the treasurer and all myself knew that, so it's in there, so we're gonna work with her this week and get some clarity and put it back on next week, but-
Miscommunication with some numbers, put in whatever, we'll do it next week then, perfect. Old Fire Station, RFP, opening bids.
Merry Christmas.
Quite a few of them. Okay. From what we asked for, so the town of Acton is currently accepting bids for the complete demolition, please visit, uh, for the complete bids back, so here it is. So, 40 by 60, the bid must include 100% of all off-site removal of the material, the completed site will be gravel-based and prepared for asphalt. See what we're looking for, first one is Caleb Chessy. Um, I'm just gonna read off the numbers, we're gonna need time to go through them and make sure they all did what they say they're gonna do, so-
I'm making decisions today anyways.
Don't get excited that some are higher than others, uh, Caleb Chessy, assuming it's complete, comes in at 21,240. Next one is from Seth McCoy. 64,000. David Langley and son. 20,000. Norman Elect, uh, Norman Enterprises. 12,050. Gerard Escavation. 29,000.
They're all over the place.
Charlie Plant. 19,000.
When all the local guys are writing next to each other.
Acton Escavators. 27,900. Foglio in Waterboro. 38,250.
I don't think we've gotten this many bids in anything, no.
They like to tear things down.
I guess they do, I, I would've loved to have put a bid on that, but I was a little loud, dude.
This one is Curtis Earthworks. 18,300.
Love to know what it cost to build that building in Monmouthville.
It didn't cost that.
I don't think it cost, I'll bet it didn't cost what the low bid was.
Yeah.
6970.
Morin and Sun Earthworks.
Who was that?
Morin and Sun's Earthwork.
Morin.
Morin, M-O-R-I-N, that Lebanon, that thought of jacks up the houses, 24,000. Gardner Concrete is our last one.
Gardner?
Gardner.
Never heard of him.
This gentleman, um, came down from far, far away, came three or four times. I'm like, where's the number, it says amount, I'm looking.
There's no amount?
There's down bottom, 17,500. So I'll put them in a spreadsheet for you for next week, email Tom. Huh?
I'm glad I didn't bid on it. I wanted none of that cheap.
What was the lowest, 12.5?
Who's that, Norman Enterprises?
Yeah, I hear they're on a shapely.
Oh, I know you-
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I'm trying to open them all, all right, I'll put it together, we'll look at it next week. Is there anything, um, so the bid just said that, um, obviously they have the liability insurance, workers comp. Anything else you want me to prepare for next Wednesday? Or just the spreadsheet?
Can I ask a question? The question is, on the disposal of this material.
Huh?
Is it monitored, or?
We did put in the thing that had the, uh, the building material had to be disposed of, either qualified site-
Certified site, yeah.
Bingo, thank you.
And, yeah, and we'll take the time to read them all, to make sure that's what they say, and I'll put any notes in we have for them. At least they're open in a public meeting, and we'll-
At least I know the people that I, I talk to, they're looking at it, we're asking about that also. The, the cinder blocks, you don't have to, it's just concrete, but it's the building material itself that we were worried about. Okay, um, where are we now? Fire, fire departments, sprinkler system quotes.
Okay, so I thought I'd put those in your packages, I guess not, because I have too many of them.
These aren't the quotes, are they?
These are the quotes.
I don't wanna see those, yet.
Okay.
Uh, I thought we talked-
Well, right, so Ed, I mean, Ed came to me and asked me if I had it and put it on the agenda, so there are two. Nobody told me to take it off, well, the policy does say three, I believe, I'll pull it up.
Still wanna see the quote, I just wanna see the quotes and don't get the third quote.
Yep, no, and I wasn't gonna read them.
Make it look like, no.
No, it does say three, I-
So, I, Wayne says that he spoke to you about not being able to get three, so that's-
And that's as much as he spoke to me about, he said he couldn't get three.
Have Wayne contact the guy that does our plumbing here.
Okay.
Because he does sprinklers system.
Perfect.
And, he does, he's our plumber.
Yep.
He might as well be lease pricing out, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll have our three quotes, and then I'll look at them, good?
I think that sounds perfect.
Okay, awesome.
Yep, give him one more name, and we'll move on to next week.
Yep. Bolch Dam, EAP.
So this is an emergency action plan for Bolch Pond Dam, uh, something that we've been working on back and forth with the town of Newfield. Essentially, it's just your emergency plan, we've gone through it, um, there's a bunch of notification flow charts, um, and it really just needs you to take it home and proof it.
I'm just looking at, they, they actually got the coordinates, GPS coordinates right on the thing where the dam is.
Um, so I just need you to take it home and, and review it, um, we'll be looking for a signature next week. Um, I just noticed that, obviously, Rick's name is in there a couple of times, so I'll send it over to him as well, but, um, if you could read it, we'll bring it on its old business next week.
Well, we're reading for next week.
Yes.
Yeah, see, we didn't proofread the town report, so now we got nothing to worry about.
Yeah, we'll be done.
Okay, um-
It's very similar to the one we had.
Yes, it's just some existing updates that, uh, Newfield recommends.
Which is the case of, uh, it lets go or something.
Evacuation plan, and, yeah.
Yeah, I think I had something to do with this way back in the day.
Yeah, your nut, name was in the original one.
Yes.
That must've been a long time.
Back in your day, 2010. Yeah, I think I helped write the first one.
Abatements.
Okay, so we got, I'm gonna say four or five abatements, um, and two denials. Um, I'm only bringing forward two abatements for you right now, the other three, I've sent the assessor back some questions, um, I'm gonna say I read them on your behalf, and see if I have any questions before I put them in front of you. Uh, I spoke to the code officer, a couple of them were granted abatements based on the statement that said, the reason for the abatement is the lot is not buildable at this time, and I struggled with-
At this time?
What that meant, and why it was dropping the valuation, so I've sent Dennis some emails, I'm getting Jason involved.
Frontage or something?
Well, no, it, Jason's saying they're buildable, so it's, we, there's some gray area, so we want some more information. So I've taken three off the agenda, but the two that, um, that there aren't, don't seem to be any concerns with are abatements for site improvements that were reflected, uh, to change the grade of the property, Dennis actually went out there and took a look at them. First one is for Tax Map 224 Lot 17, they're issuing an abatement of 77 dollars and 40 cents. He simply lowered the, the grade of the, um, land from one to two, and it dropped the valuation by 12,000 dollars, so that's 77 dollars and 40 cents. Next one is on Tax Map 153 Lot 54, um, the land was reduced to Table Four to adjust, and adjusted for the frontage quality and the actual building location. This is a tax abatement for 127 dollars, uh, I'm sorry, tax abatement in the amount of 127,249 in evaluation, and 820 dollars in taxes. The other ones pertain to Tax Map 220 Lot 6 and 220 dot Lot 6 dash 1. Uh, this indicates that, um, O'Donnell and Associates has reviewed the abatement application, uh, they have referenced in the letter, uh, three properties that, uh, they believe are similar in size, sale dates, sale prices, and they're denying his request for an abatement on both properties because they feel like they're assessed properly. So, those are the four in front of you tonight, and, um, Jason and I will meet with Dennis next week.
We all have to do two of them, right?
No, those, I didn't print the other ones, I didn't bring them in, I was just telling you that there's-
Two abatements and two denials.
Yeah, and there's-
Well, we don't have to make a motion on the denials, do we?
Yeah, you still gotta sign them.
Oh, we do?
Yep, yep.
Can we just make a motion?
To sign them all as a, as-
Based on information presented by the town administrator.
As red?
As red.
Yeah, yeah, because you're not, the other ones I didn't present at all.
So you made a motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, okay, we'll do some signing. Is it 25th, right?
Correct.
24, 5.
Fifth.
Yeah, 25th.
The year.
I gotta lie to them.
Oh, 24, the year, oh.
It's too early, it's still January, so I wanted to make sure we're still the right year, so-
I was only just a day, so, sorry.
I knew, I knew that was gonna screw you up. You know, I do that, I'll be writing a check on due date for the last year, you know, I do that quite a bit.
My, my mind's still young, I don't have that issue.
Ooh. He's getting good, he's getting right home.
Oh, I guess he is.
So while you're signing, before we go into, um, executive session, so next week, we're gonna have a spreadsheet that has all the budget numbers as presented. Um, I need some direction from the board, because next week is the 30, 30th. We need some direction from the board as to, um, what, if any, salary increase we're putting in, what special projects we're moving for, remember, we promised the warrant of finance right around February 1st, the warrant, next Wednesday is the 31st.
Um, I, I'm not gonna make any recommendations.
Well, I'm not looking for it, I'm just reminding you.
She's saying be prepared for next week to have.
Okay, I'll sign it, so I was trying to do two things at once, multitasking. I really wanna see what the overall number's gonna be before we start making decisions like that.
Yeah, we have everything in there right now, but that's including the, the paving, and including the, like, the playground, and-
There's a half million dollars extra in there right now that-
There's over probably a 7, 800 dollar, 700, 700,000 dollar increase at this point, without anything taken out. Well, it was 1.2, but I took out, in my head, I took out the paving that you said.
The paving, okay, so you're still at 800, roughly, yeah.
Still a- But that's all the cars, and that's everything, and no increases, so.
Executive session. Executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'm, I move that we go into executive session, MRSA 401 dash 6A personnel.
Please, there'll be a decision on this, so, yeah. All in favor? See you in a little bit. Hey, do I hear a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session, MRSA 401 dash 6A personnel at 7:30 8 PM.
Second.
All in favor? And we have a decision?
Okay. Okay, so as I alluded to earlier, we did some interviews at the fire station, interviewed two, one stood out. We just had a discussion on applicant A, and I'd like to make a motion that that name gets put forward as the next full-time employee for the fire station, pending background check and her passing the.
Physical.
Physical.
Occupational therapy?
What's the name of the company?
Workwell.
Workwell.
Occupation.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Jennifer?
Yes, I forgot something I was supposed to bring up, I ain't told David when we were walking the hallway, I asked him, so I got a call from a parent and a coach, actually. Wondering what the policy is, or the board will consider writing a policy regarding canceling rec in, in climate weather, school activities are closed, you know, we canceled our meeting last night, apparently there was basketball last night and it's come to a concern, Dan's the liaison, he may know more, to some people that it wasn't canceled.
Yeah, I had a discussion, I was surprised to find out that there was still practice, a seven PM practice last night, one of the roads were probably most slippery. I know that we changed for safety reasons, I know a lot of things around town were canceled, and I just found it a little surprising for, to have a practice that people would still go out on roads, I know there were some, at least one family that was coming from a good distance. And I did hear that there was a potential slip, which nothing obviously happened, but, you know, we were lucky in that, but I think, whether, I, I was questioning if there is a policy. For circumstances of cancellation of games and practices, including like, one, they're canceled, how much notice they have, and if there isn't a policy in the books, I think there should be a policy.
Well, yeah, definitely, I mean, everybody knew yesterday was gonna be really bad.
Yeah, I mean, we canceled by noon time, we knew that.
They were, you know, they were bad, we were all, you know, plowing and saying, and, and, you know, nobody should've been on the roads last night at all, especially at seven o'clock, that's when they were the worst. But when the town hall shuts down, transfer station, the school, after, after school events and stuff like that start shutting down. The director or whoever, coaches, the direct, it's the director's job, that, those are, that's the person that gotta make that call, so we really oughta have a policy, right?
I think so, cause even if it's director's call, having something that says, if you hear inclement weather, you need to make this decision by twelve, because you have parents and kids who are, are waiting to see if they're gonna go or not, if you're doing it an hour before practice, some people may have already left. Or cause they're already out or for whatever reason, or they may be planning on coming, so there needs to be some guidelines at least.
They canceled all kinds of soccer games this year and stuff, I mean, they know what it's like to cancel bad weather, so.
So, I can draft a policy to have in front of you next week, so you, we wanted to say that obviously if the after-school activities at the school, at the town hall, but we're not leaving the decision in one person's hands, correct?
No, no, the, the decision, you know, the, the rec director's gonna have to.
Consult.
Consult you and then whoever liaisons, well, the board, whoever. Figure that part out afterwards, I guess, but probably be the liaison when you think.
I would think.
I would think it's probably the existing thing, we'll have to worry about.
That's actually what we do now.
Liaison or chair.
For instance, bad weather, the transfer station's gonna close, she usually texts me.
Yeah, and the, the way the policy's written now is that the transfers, that decision is made between the town administrator and the road commissioner for, for those departments, but I always call the board.
Yeah.
You got, you got anything to add anymore?
Um, no, just.
Charlie coming up, so I wanna be true.
Just that there should be a policy, what circumstances they get canceled, and like I said, reasonable time, not an hour before, it should be within reasonable minutes.
We have this new app thing they're using, so they're all communicating, so, you know, they should.
Do it in the happy.
Yeah, bang, you know, but, Charlie?
Oh, I'm listening, I'm.
No, no, I'm, I'm waiting for you now.
I know the school can do push notifications, text messages, all right, can the town do it?
No, not currently.
All you have is that antiquated email system and it just does not work.
The newsletter is helping, though.
Antiquated, we're looking that one up tonight.
It is, that's a crippled antiquated system.
With that new app that the, that the rec department has, won't that do it?
They have, yes, that can, that can cancel it through the coaches and the players and stuff, but we can look into it townwide, there are, there are options, other towns are starting to use them. You have to opt into it, whether it's a town meeting notice or whatever we put out there, yes, I agree, there are things out there.
So much more efficient than relying on email.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but.
All right, that was it.
Thank you, Charlie.
I agree, I think having multiple forms of, cause you're not gonna get everyone with one form, so having everything.
Yeah, we try to put it everywhere, so, all right, I'll have a policy for next week and I'll touch base with her in case there's any inclement weather in the meantime.
Okay, new hire.
Done.
Yeah, he didn't, that was an agenda item, cause.
No, that's what we did when we came out of executive.
You just told me to do.
Sorry, doesn't happen often.
Okay, that's all right, um, we got a public comment? Ray, you don't get nothing tonight?
I was just saying, and people don't have common sense to stay home when it's inclement weather.
Right.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? Good night.